Good evening. I am going to call to order the December 2nd, 2024 School Committee meeting. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass Dermal Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We have Harper Media recording this evening. Thank you. And we are recording on Zoom for purposes of the minutes. I am here in person as well as Jen Benham, Carrie Nee, Tim Miller Dempsey, and Matt Cosman. Michelle Air will be participating online, and Ally is not here today. Okay, so I don't...
I don't want to wear green, even though I'm not...
We made mention, we've got all green here. It's really funny. So approval of the minutes, we've got one set of minutes to approve.
Okay. Sure. I will make a motion to approve the minutes of this school committee meeting held on November 18th, 2024.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. All right, thank you. All right, so item three is questions and comments. This is the part of the meeting where we set aside 15 minutes to take questions and comments for things that are not on tonight's agenda. Before I read the statement, does anybody have anything? Okay. Moving on to item four, superintendent's report. Katie?
Hey, thank you. I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving weekend. And this evening's superintendent's report, I wanted to kick off by thanking our preschool team, who hosted a very well-attended preschool open house last week, and there were over 70 families in attendance. We are in the process of collecting registrations, and then we will do a lottery in January. So we're looking forward to welcoming our new preschool families. This Friday, December 6th, Hingham Sports Partnership and HPS will co-host an informal groundbreaking ceremony for the new dock wellness facility at Hingham High School. So we're looking forward to seeing students in that new space, and very grateful to Hingham Sports Partnership for their work in helping us with that project. Over the next two weeks, we are going to have a flurry of winter concerts at all levels, including the middle school and high school chorus concert on the 9th, high school band and orchestra on the 10th, the middle school band and orchestra on the 12th, and a variety of grade five elementary concerts throughout the month of December. So let the music play. And then last, wanted to just share some good news that we received notice that 73 members of the class of 2025 were awarded the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. These scholarships are awarded based on students' MCAS scores, and it provides tuition credit for up to eight semesters of undergraduate education at a Massachusetts State College or university. So thank you to those students.
All right. Item five, 5.1, communications received by the superintendent. Have you, do you have anything to report?
No communications this evening.
Okay. 5.2, student communications, Slater?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Long weekend, kids are off. 5.3, other communications, anyone on the committee have anything? Okay, all right. Item six, unfinished business, we don't have any. So we are moving right along to item seven, new business. 7.1 is to receive the school improvement plan for Foster Elementary School and act as appropriate. We've got Matthew Scheifli here today.
Matthew?
Well, people call you Matthew, I call you Mav, but I didn't know if it was too informal.
It's all good. I was looking for my father to see what I did wrong.
Some of the parents, when I met Foster in the morning, referred to you as Matthew. I'm like, oh, okay, maybe I was not supposed to call you Matt.
No.
When I screen check.
There it goes. I'm working now. I'm going forward and backwards, there we go. All right, well, welcome. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm Matt Scheifli, I'm the principal of Foster Elementary School. I'm here to present our updated school improvement plan for the next two years. I'm sure there's a lot of buzz, because everybody knows we're in the process of moving. Before we start this, I will give you just a brief update that the first, oh, thousand boxes or so got moved Friday to the new Foster, to the respective classrooms and the places we want to be, we want all of our materials to be. And that process is continuing over the next month, but for, I was quite surprised to hear that it was about four and a half, five hours' worth of work for them to move 1,000 boxes. So very pleased to see that that went smoothly on Friday. So we are well, I think, on our way a month from now. Today's December 2nd, so January 2nd, we should be in the new digs, if all goes according to plan. And it's not moving. There it goes. Look at that. Just reviewing, there's probably the last picture you'll see me present of the old Foster as we're looking at the front there. Our mission statement at Foster School, "Our students will enjoy the process of learning, constantly striving to meet their potential and become lifelong learners, be responsible, and will demonstrate respect for self, others, and property, practice critical thinking skills to solve problems, and have a strong sense of community, both in and outside of the Our school council members, myself as principal, Tara Healy, Kristy McDonald, Caitlin Riley are our parent representatives, Erin McGrath, Allison Thompson, Sarah Vogel are our teacher representatives, we have Myrna Leary, who is our community rep, and Ness Corrente, our school committee liaison. And one of these days, I'll figure out these buttons. We've narrowed it down to three goals. We're going to continue with goal one, which was the goal over the last two years. It ties in nicely with the transition into the new building, communicating out. Goal number two, healthy, equitable, and inclusive communities. And then goal three, culturally responsive teaching and learning. So goal one, communication and collaboration. Throughout the 2022-24 school years, the principal will engage in two-way communication in regards to the Foster Building Project as measured by newsletters and opportunities for parents to meet with the administration to collaborate. I'd like to add in there, we're also going to count some stakeholders as well, as we have been engaging the community in various aspects of the next phase. So perfect example is to start this year, we collaborated to begin a Crow Point Bus, which I think everybody would agree in the community that that was a very good move. I thank the senior leadership for supporting us in this endeavor, and for the parent input from the school community that this was something we felt we needed. And I think as we progress into the spring, moving past the old Foster as it's coming down, I think that bus is going to become more important as we move through the school year. I put number two down there is Box, which is a new initiative. I want to thank Ness for bringing that forward. It's been a lot of fun for myself and the kids. We are averaging right now one more kid a week or two. We seem to be growing as the weeks are going on, and I think the children are expressing how much fun they're having. We are seeing lots of friends join us. We began, and we're getting ready in January, to sit down with the rec department about bringing back Foster Plus after-school programming. With the new facility, we should have plenty of space for the rec department to come in and bring programs into our schools, so that's further collaboration. We are working right now, I think Friday morning, I have a meeting with the PTO around what the new, the first day of school is going to look like. We are working on activities. It could range anywhere from a nice, what do you call it, scavenger hunt, because once these children get into that building, they're going to need to figure out where everything is. And it is a much larger space than we're accustomed to. So we've got a nice scavenger hunt that we're working on, and we're working on some other things. In addition, we're planning some safety protocols and practicing fire drills. Where do we go if there's a fire drill? All of that information, very important. A lot of planning around the move. Looking at other things that have come from the community in my conversations is setting up a parent day for parents to come in and see the new Foster. I'm not planning on a school day, because parking is still a premium, but we are looking at possibly just opening up the building, and in conversation about opening up the building on a Saturday and say, giving each grade level a time slot on a Saturday to come on in, walk the school, get a chance to see the new building, and see what it's all about in there. But during the school day, we don't really have the capacity or the parking to fulfill that obligation. I think the big, the big phase as far as starting the school year is making sure, you know, in January, we have the right traffic pattern set up for that operation as the building is coming down. Where are people parking? Where are parents dropping off? And where are our buses dropping off? Working, we have a meeting hopefully within the next few days with the architect and our project managers and the police department to try and plan and make sure we've got a nice, safe procedure for the opening. And then for September 2026, it's going to be a whole new traffic pattern. So I think this would be my fourth and fifth traffic patterns for the project. Again, continued conversation. And then depending on where we are with the project, I'm hoping, and I think the schedule is for August, the last schedule that we looked at was for the project to be done, all of the parking to be done, and everything to be ready. So hopefully, we won't need the Crow Point Bus for September of 2025. And then continuing to support staff and students in the moving process. Goal two, healthy, equitable, and inclusive communities. The Foster School community will implement behavioral lessons that reinforce the behavioral matrix expectations, so that 95% of the students will have less than one office referral. It was a great plan until we didn't get into the new building. So I am holding off on phase one of this. We've got, as I've reported to you before, the last couple of years, we've done a lot of work around the matrix, we've got our lessons prepared, we are ready to implement. We have started doing half-school assemblies with the principal on a, probably about every six-week basis. We've been getting together with kids, acknowledging outstanding behavior, and having whole-school morning meetings to reinforce the expectations for the month and what our goal is. That's really been kind of awesome, to be honest, and we've used that format. If you haven't seen what we're working with, with recesses, we've got these two very tiny postage-stamped play spaces right now. First graders, we've done a lot of work with first grade around respecting boundaries and being able to interact. I see some heads shaking. Erica has been at one of our recesses, so she knows what we're maneuvering. But we've been using that same format. When we've seen a problem, we'll pull the kids together for a brief half-hour meeting, and they will work with us on what should it look like, what could we do different to make it better? So we're, we're at a place right now where I, we haven't filmed the videos, I don't want to film the videos until we're in the new spaces. We've got a lot of work to do with this January 3rd, when all of the kids are in, we are having our first, in my duration, whole-school assembly inside the new gym will be a major event for me as the leader of the school, and I think it'll be great for the kids to all hear the same messages at the same time as a community as to the expectations. When we look at the implementation of spot stories, that is a supplemental, I don't want to call it a curriculum, but it's a supplemental series of stories that we've started using last year in grade one at Foster, and we're looking to implement it in pre-K to grade two. The spot stories help students identify what their feelings are, and our toolbox curriculum is outstanding at helping us give kids the tools to handle emotions, big or small. But the reality is, when you get right down to it, some of our kids don't know what they're feeling. So the spot books really teach kids, what is it you're feeling, what is the emotion you're having? And that connection to the toolbox tool is outstanding, because it really helps them identify which tool they need from the toolbox. So it's kind of, I want to give my grade-one team all the credit in the world, they've created the slides, they've created the work that we have to implement, so we're very excited about that. We are re-energizing toolbox tools this year. Actually, today, one of the things I noticed for the month of December is our guidance counselor and our school adjustment counselor put out their information today for the month as to what toolbox tools we're using, what the lessons are and the resources for the teachers. So we're really getting that ship sailing again, nice and strong. I'm just going through a couple other things here. This is one of the big ones for me, is once we're in the new building, I want to see our school council engage the students with, I'm thinking of our fifth graders in the student council, and get them together to create morning announcements related to the theme of the month, related to the matrix. So kind of getting the, the student engagement, everybody involved in it, and really making it all a living part of our lives at Foster. The other thing that I'm looking to do next year would be a book study. We've done some work, we've been very lucky to have Jess Minahan working with us. I think if, if any of you have had the chance to either do a little bit of reading about Jess Minahan and the work that she does, it's important work for us to look at student behavior differently, as a school, as a team, and, and really start to implement different strategies to help our students when they're struggling. And our goal, number three, culturally responsive teaching and learning, ensuring that students' success through aligned, high-quality pre-K to 12 curriculum in collaboration with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education through their literacy academy. So Foster's, we started, we've had one session with the literacy academy liaison, and we are looking to really strengthen our tier-one curriculum. We've done an initial walkthrough, we've looked at our tier-one implementation of the reading curriculum, we have looked at some of our interventions during the TRI block of instruction, and that's really where we're at, is we've done an initial analysis and a walkthrough, and now we're looking at data. So the 13th of December, our liaison's coming in, we're going to take a look at the building data, over the trends over the last few years, start to analyze where our weak spots might be and what we can be doing to improve. So we're going to be looking to improve instructional practices. I would say, I think everybody would agree right now that the instructional materials are in good shape. I will speak very highly about the feedback I'm getting from staff around the reading program that has been implemented over the last year. I think it's very structurally sound for us as far as phonics and the things that we need, and I think that we're at a right spot to implement these four areas. The effective instructional practices, the database decision-making, and making sure our tiered systems of support are in place and doing what they're supposed to do. At the end of all of this, at the end of our two years, we hope to have a comprehensive, hope to, we will have a comprehensive annual literacy action plan. And to get there, we're going to utilize components of the DESI coherence guidebook and improve our literacy outcomes for all of our students. So that's the three goals for now. I do anticipate, after a few months of being in Foster, when we come back and we give you an update, I do anticipate, hopefully from my perspective, I'd like to add a fourth goal in there, but I think we need to let some of the dust settle a little for us at Foster, given the, the big changes that we're going through.
Literally.
So, literally, yes.
Carrie and Jen were able to help coach Box last week, and so they saw, like, it's just remarkable what you have been able to do in such a small space. I'm the liaison, but I've always gone into your office, and I've never really appreciated the space outside of your office. And just seeing how small the gym is, and all of the different changes that you've had to make with the, the traffic pattern, and custodian Laura is amazing. It's incredible what you guys have done. I really feel like the, I'm so happy the bus is in place, because seeing even pedestrians who are not part of the school community trying to walk down that street, it's really scary, so I'm glad that that was put in place. But it's incredible, you guys are doing amazing.
It's very much appreciated. And you all have to support it too, so.
Yeah, well, I know you guys were, were really focused in getting that done, and you kept bringing it to us, so I appreciate it. You know, I just think that you guys are doing such an amazing job, and the kids have all got smiles on their face, and, you know, I think we'll get there.
They're very resilient, they're very resilient, for sure.
They are. Anyway, anyone have any questions or comments?
I, for one, am very grateful that Matt has an experience in military operations. It's really coming into this year, so thank you, Matt.
I think it may have come in more helpful than some of the college background that I have, but I'm looking forward to being a principal again, and not a traffic manager, and not a project, assistant project manager.
We have, okay, yeah.
Part of the process is asking if we have to approve it.
Yes. That's why it's making sense. It really just makes me laugh. It's really just going on here. We cut Jen.
I will make a motion to approve the school improvement plan for Foster Elementary School for the years 2024 to 2026.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Michelle?
Thank you, Carrie. I'm an aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you so much. All right. 7.2, to receive a strategic plan update and act as appropriate.
Sure. While Sheri pulls up the slides, I just wanted to share that we are, of course, in year three of our strategic plan, so we have found doing these updates very gratifying for the team to really see the progress that's been made. This year in particular, as we're looking at the strategic plan, we're really asking two questions, what work is left undone, and what work might carry over into the next strategic plan? So again, as we're going through tonight, I'll highlight some of the goals that I do think we are really rounding out, and others that will continue on into the next plan. Thanks, Sheri. So again, this is our 2022 to 25 plan, that has five spokes, and tonight we'll just give some high-level updates on each of the five spokes. So our first goal around culture of collaboration and community, I do think is a goal that we've made some really sound progress on. However, I do think communication is an evergreen goal, and one that we'll continue to work on, and continue to morph and change as norms change of how our, our community is communicating. So as you know, our main source of communication that we're finding that families are really responding most to are those weekly principal newsletters. And that has become something that's operational, it's expected, and it is something that, again, families have expressed gratitude for, the common format, the routine nature of receiving that information, and we're finding that that is where people are finding their news. So to that end, anytime we have a district announcement, we often are using those principal newsletters to convey that. We do plan to give quarterly, more central newsletters through the superintendent's office that will highlight more district-level initiatives that we want to highlight and bring awareness to. We continue to be very active on social media, so Facebook for the older people out there like myself, who are dinosaurs, no. And then we also are, have a presence on Instagram that tends to appeal to a younger demographic. On new this year, I have to thank Slater and a couple of other Hingham High School students who suggested that we add LinkedIn as a platform that we use, and we are hopeful that that will really take off with our alumni. That's been a network that we haven't had as ready access to, and so we're hoping, starting particularly with the senior class and some of the recent classes, if we can really popularize this, we then have a more ready way to access alumni. In particular, we could tap that alumni network for doing surveys on how well-prepared that they are for the college environment, other networking opportunities, so grateful to Slater and the students who brought that forth. And then finally, grateful to Heather Cashman for all of her work this year in getting the Hingham Public Schools mobile app and new website up and running. So again, we will continue to morph and change in terms of the platform that we use, but have a very strong commitment to communication. And you can move on to the next one. Thanks, Sheri. One more. So also in the theme of collaboration and community, again, we are trying to bring awareness to some of our district-level initiatives. So you'll be hearing lots in the coming weeks about our Building Thinking Classrooms initiative, and again, we're trying to echo themes across platforms, and so you'll see a lot of the same news information recycled in different ways to make sure that we're reaching our audiences. Of course, want to use our social media and any platform to highlight all of the great work of our students, whether that be enrichment or in the classroom. And we continue our partnership with local media organizations, including Harbor Media, who have done some really great seaside stories, they call them. And we've made an active effort this year to reach other community members that, other than parents and students, and so we've been making an active effort to be out in the community at the farmer's market, at the Interfaith Community Lunch, and so on, in order to access other members of the community. You can skip on, Sheri, thank you. Continuing with the theme of communication, we have made some progress on updating our policy manual. I do think that that is one area that we will continue to work on our procedures. We've done a great job with our policies and just continuing to work on updating procedures to match. In terms of district documents, we have updated several documents in the course of the life of this strategic plan. Most recently, we rolled out our decaf to our faculty and continuing to work to operationalize that. Our Common Handbooks have been operationalized. We have a new Para-educator handbook this year that was drafted, is still in the phase of receiving feedback and being rolled out to staff. And we're also in the process of updating some of our evaluation tools. So in the spirit of updating our documents, those are a few projects we've been working on this year. And then finally, we've really made a commitment to communicating during those critical transition years. And so most recently, we did a media campaign related to our preschool registration, did a lot of outreach across platforms on that. We'll do something similar once we launch our kindergarten registration process. And then in terms of transitions to middle school and to high school, starting after the first of the year, we'll begin to do a countdown to middle school and countdown to high school, in which the principal of the middle school will share out with grade five families some of his newsletters, so families are informed of what life is like at the middle school. And similarly, Dr. Bucky at the high school will share out some newsletters to our eighth grade families, so those families have a sense of what's to come. Student Services will continue its annual transition to secondary evening for parents of students in special education, and we're continuing to work on some community partnerships for inclusive transition plans for our students ages 14 to 22. I'll now turn it over to Erica for what in the strategic plan is known as culturally responsive teaching and learning. I do find that sometimes the public isn't always sure exactly what that means, so I just rephrase that to be inclusive, innovative, and evidence-based are some of the themes of our teaching and learning initiatives.
Yeah, absolutely. So our first goal around inclusive, innovative, and evidence-based teaching and learning was around our pathways programs. The Global Citizenship Program has, is in its, I believe, 12th year this year with 113 students participating. And we've been able to use Perkins grant funding to support the development of some additional pathways. Our Advanced Manufacturing Pathway is in its second year, we've got 15 students that we anticipate will complete that, that program. Interestingly, that seems to have captured a slightly different demographic than our traces students, which is kind of nice. The Arts Pathway similarly is in its second year with 57 students on the certificate track. They have been, I think, doing a really nice job of creating some... can watch out for notices from Mr. Tarantello. And we're continuing our partnership with Mass Hire for career and workshop opportunities. We are continuing all to expand our, the availability of dual enrollment courses. We now have them available in science, math, and world language. And then moving forward, we've been approved to add psychology, sociology, marketing, and accounting through Quincy College, starting in the next school year. So that'll be seven total courses offered through Quincy College, and then one through UMass Boston, and one through Middlesex Community College, because world language is a little bit harder to track down in terms of our, in terms of our dual enrollment courses. In a change from our previous practice, all of our ninth-grade students are enrolled in biology, which is going to put more students on the track to higher, at higher-level science courses. We're in our... We're in our second year of offering AP Environmental Science, which seems to have been very popular, and we're continuing to grow our relationships with local universities, including work partnerships that can go in both directions. Finally, we are exploring and implementing research-based innovative instructional practices. I believe it will be at our next meeting, we're going to have some teachers come to speak about Building Thinking Classrooms, which is an initiative that's been funded through HAF that promotes a really collaborative and dynamic approach to problem-solving in math. I've been reading the book, and I'm fascinated. It seems amazing, and I think that the teachers are feeling really positive about it. That seems to be how it's going. PRS and EAST are completing their third year in the DUCY Inclusive Practices Academy. Foster and SOUTH are in year one of the DUCY Literacy Academy, and we are continuing with our emphasis on data-informed instruction through the MTSS program in K-8 PLCs and team meetings with groups of teachers that are teaching the same groups of kids. They have the opportunity, those K-5 teachers in particular, to meet with the many specialists that we have access to, our literacy, math, and writing specialists, to align those MTSS supports. And the 6-8 at the middle school level teams are also meeting to discuss student progress and needs, and that seems to be going very well. I recently was able to roll out the newly updated D cap to the faculty at the high school and at the middle school. At the elementary level, it's been rolled out by principals in their faculty meetings, and so far that all seems to be going well.
Thank you, Erica. And so next up, on the theme of inclusive teaching and learning, I did want to just very briefly highlight some of our special education initiatives, because Dr. Cataldo will be joining us at our next meeting to give a much more thorough update on our progress towards the new Special Education Program Review Improvement Plan. But did want to share that we did, of course, last summer, offer the IMSE OG Plus Comprehensive Course, and that is going to promote multisensory approaches to literacy. We continue to work with landmark consultants to support our language-based classrooms at all levels, and we continue to work with the NESCUP group in order to support the students in our RISE program at the elementary level. And again, Dr. Cataldo will be back for much more about progress in the Special Education Improvement Plan. And then just a few other highlights of some initiatives going on in teaching and learning. Erica rolled out to the Elementary Curriculum Committee a tool that teachers can use to look at their classroom libraries for their cultural proficiency and relevance. We have been working with a couple of partners this year to center Asian-American voices, which was an underrepresented voice in some of the literature that our students are exposed to. So worked with an author as part of our One Book One School program, and we're also working with two professors from UMass Boston to do some professional development for our educators. And in world language, we continue to expand our reach of languages in a French culture class, which is an inclusive program, and we are in year two of our pre-K KIA Spanish immersion program. Next up is our Portrait of a Graduate Initiative, which you've now heard quite a bit about. And so we will be narrowing in on the final document in January with a presentation to the school committee in February. In addition to the formal work being done by the Portrait of a Graduate Steering Committee, also wanted to thank Erica, who has designed a graduate course for our teachers so they can explore this concept of a portrait of a graduate further. And they'll begin the work of not only identifying the skills and competencies needed by our graduates, but what this will look like in the classroom. So she's already kind of foreshadowing the next steps in that initiative. Next up, of course, is our reading program implementation, and this is something that has been a major focus of the strategic plan for the last three years. And in addition to implementing the inter-reading program, we also generally are just focusing in on reading instruction. So I do think that we will obviously continue the work to strengthen our elementary reading, but I do think math is next up. So in terms of where we're heading in our next strategic plan, math will probably be a major area of focus, but certainly continuing all of the great work that has been done in elementary reading. Next up is fully funding and engaging in a multi-year curriculum review adoption cycle process. So over the course of the past three years, in addition to the reading program, which was a major area of focus for our curriculum updates, we have also updated a number of other areas of curriculum, including elementary writing. We've made some updates. Elementary social studies, grades three and five, have been piloting and adopting some new curriculum through investigating history. We've discussed at length the Open SIED adoption, that was a multi-year adoption for grades six to eight at the middle school. And then we are in the process right now of continuing our research into new math programs, and so more will be coming on our timeline, an intended pilot of a new math program. Finally, for program reviews, this year we have our business department on deck for their program review, and given that we've had some leadership changes in world language, we had adjusted our timeline and will complete the world language department review next Healthy, Equitable, and Inclusive School Community is the third spoke of our wheel, and this year we have very much focused a lot of our energy and attention on SEL. So the last two years has been very laser-like focus on academic gains. This year, we're also really fleshing that out to look at the whole student, to look at the SEL needs of students. So you've heard our elementary principals throughout their school improvement plans discussing the PBIS, the Positive Behavior Intervention Systems, that we are rolling out across our elementary schools, or at the very least strengthening and reinvigorating. We're continuing to review our elementary SEL curriculum. You've heard us speak of the toolbox lessons, but we're finding that we do need some additional curriculum materials, particularly for our upper grades, and so the team is looking at some new materials that include something called Everyday Speech. You've heard a lot about our year-long professional development series with Jessica Minahan that's been very well-received by staff. We will continue that work through book studies and additional work with Jessica this year. We are working with DUCY on the Social Emotional Behavior Academy to continue that work on PBIS. And the middle school, in the same way that the elementary is looking to reinvigorate their SEL curriculum, the middle school is as well. Our next slide really gets more at the MTSS aspects of our Healthy, Equitable, and Inclusive School Communities. And so we have been continuing to look at what tier-one opportunities students have for their social-emotional learning, and so we continue to partner with organizations such as Safe Schools to make sure that we are providing supports. Our Wellness Committee has been looking at some additional programming this year, including the SWEL program. And then we have partnered with a couple of outside consultants, including Jim Levine, who's working with the high school, on some additional tier-two and tier-three supports. On our next slide, we're continuing with some themes around diversity, equity, and inclusion. We continue to partner with Darnisa Amante Jackson. We're grateful to have Metco grant funding to continue our work with her this year. She'll be working with our Equity Committee on some professional development and supporting some of the SEL work that we're doing this year and tying that to a sense of inclusion. Continue to be grateful for the professional development offered through Metco, Inc. On Thursday, Erica and I and several members of the leadership team will be heading to the Metco Directors Conference, which is a really terrific professional development offering, and we've taken advantage of a number of other offerings through Metco. Again, mentioned the DUCY Safe Schools, which has been a terrific source of professional development for supporting our LGBTQ+ students. And then in the coaching realm, Jim Quattramoni continues to work with the Northeastern University Center for the Study of Sports, which has done some great work around professional development for our coaches in this space. Last year, as you were aware, we updated our Bullying Prevention Plan and continue to offer trainings, both to leaders and to all staff, around bullying prevention and bullying reporting. We will also continue to communicate to families on a quarterly basis how families can access the reports, to report incidences of bias through our portal. As you're aware, we did complete an equity audit, and we are now implementing some of the recommendations from that audit, including continuing to work to review our curriculum materials for cultural proficiency and relevance, and that includes not only classroom materials, but also looking at our school libraries. Capital and Finance, obviously, one of the major focuses of Capital and Finance has been the building of the new Foster School and all that entails, and we are looking forward to welcoming students on January 3rd into that building. Another goal of Capital and Finance was to identify a benchmark for appropriate perp pupil expenditure. We're grateful for new tools from DUCY, including the radar tool that we have been using to be able to compare ourselves to other benchmark and comparable districts in order to identify how we rate in terms of our perp pupil expenditure to other districts. There is a bit of lag time in the timeliness of that data, but having that tool has certainly made our work much easier. Tonight, you'll be hearing one of our additional areas of need with regards to facility and space. So Matt Meehan has been a busy guy over the course of this year, and so highlighting some of his work here, including the Plymouth River Column Project, which is now complete. I mentioned that the dock will be having its groundbreaking ceremony this week. You'll be hearing this evening about a proposal for the SOUTH rooftop unit, and so I don't want to steal Ayesha's thunder. I'll let her share that in a moment. You recently approved the Warren article for the new roof. We are tonight also going to hear from Matt about some potential needs for the high school of Turf Fields. And so again, very busy in the realm of facilities and spaces and keeping things up to date for our students. Next up are the components of our technology plan. In terms of infrastructure, the ViewSonic board installation has been our primary focus for refreshing technology, in addition to refreshing some of the devices in our classrooms. And work continues in terms of the instructional side of technology, working with our K-12 Digital Literacy and Computer Science Team to update those guys. And last but not least, we are at Spoke Five, which is Human Resources and Leadership, all about recruiting and retaining a diverse workforce. So we continue to partner with the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education, which regularly holds events, hiring fairs, and so on, that we have attended and worked with them to expand our workforce. Want to thank Mary Ann Foley for her work in working with our district team on the hiring handbook. The HR department has held some hiring fairs, and that has really helped us to target some of the areas of high need, which include custodial maintenance, food services, transportation, substitutes. And so those hiring fairs have been very helpful in securing some additional staff. We're regularly holding substitute orientations sessions to support onboarding. This year, we really made an effort to work on retention, in addition to recruitment, of our para-educators. So this summer, we began a new initiative of hosting a new para-orientation and providing some additional supports for paras throughout the year, so we can work on retaining our para-educator staff. And then finally, in the domain of HR, wanted to say that I'm thrilled that we are now rekindling our Joint Labor Management Committees for units A through D, and that has been very helpful in supporting open dialogue and collaborative problem-solving. We have been refining some of our HR processes, including recruitment, hiring, and applicant tracking. There'll be more updates to come on that front, and we'll be continuing to evaluate our workflow between HR and payroll, so we can improve those lines of communications. Also wanted to mention that we continue, in addition to creating a pipeline for our educators, we're also trying to create a leadership pipeline, and so trying to provide some additional opportunities for educators who might be interested in exploring administration by providing some opportunities for teacher leadership roles, invitations to leadership meetings for those who are interested in seeing what life is like in administration. And we're really working on our mentoring for new leaders. We have a very young team, and so we have made a commitment this year to make sure that we are providing adequate mentoring and support for our new leaders by providing a formal mentor in the same way that we would for our educators. And last but not least, we continue to find ways to provide additional time for collaboration for our staff. You've heard a lot about our PLC time that has really been gold for allowing educators to collaborate. And that is our update. So very extensive. Thank you so much. Any questions?
I had a couple.
Sure.
Yeah, just, this is great, and it's always, I love seeing everything in one place, and you just get the sense of everything that has happened over the time. And I was thinking, especially on the communication piece of it, just the changes in the past four years are really incredible. I just remember during COVID, trying to just get basic information out and how difficult that was. And now, you know, the newsletters are coming out, and they're just part of the fabric of the buildings, and I think that's really great. And I'm encouraged to see the commitment to continuing that and improving it as we go along. And also, going to the farmer's market, when I was at MASCA, I went to a panel about communicating with the community and hearing from them, too, and that's exactly the kind of thing. They had actually a team at a farmer's market, so I was like, okay, so you're doing the right thing. So I had one question, and it might be more appropriate for Barbara when she gives the update, but so there are a lot of partnerships for like the language-based classrooms and then the elementary RISE. What about the secondary RISE? Do they have?
Yeah, so I think Barbara, as part of her action plan, will be sharing some of her plans for that, so I don't want to steal her thunder on that. But we began last year with the partnership with NESCUP for our elementary RISE, and I do think some of the recommendations there will draw through to secondary.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, even at the secondary level, the RISE building was updated completely at the high school this year. So in terms of making it, it's kind of more similar to the middle school RISE building and space.
The facilities.
The facilities. Okay. Yeah, that's great. Matt?
So ton of accomplishments, ton of progress, which is great. Curious from where you sit, recognizing you obviously weren't in this role when this was created. If there were like one or two subs spokes that you would say biggest focus area for the next year, for whatever reason, we have made as much progress as we may have, well, it's hard when you're looking across all these to sort of figure out where that sits. Any initial thoughts? And I know some of that will be the next strategic plan, but be helpful to hear.
Absolutely. So I work with Darnisa Amante Jackson. She actually has, I should have included in the presentation tonight, a really nice slide that gives you a sense of how long changes take. And so in her slide, she recommends at least three years for MTSS, which we did. It'll take another two to three years for SEL. So we're currently in year one of SEL, and so I think we're really looking at at least one, possibly two more years to really double down on SEL in order one, possibly two more years to really double down on SEL in order to build out that MTSS triangle. So the MTSS triangle, we've been very heavy on the academic and need to flesh out that SEL. And then, that then needs to be wrapped in the Universal Design for Learning. And so she considers that another two or three years of really focused efforts. And so I think that for me, when I saw that slide that she presented, that definitely set off light bulbs for me. And I do agree that MTSS really does take a full three years to flesh out. I will say, we still have some work to do for middle school and high school. They're about a year or two behind elementary and fleshing out that academic piece of the MTSSs. But I do think for next year in particular, we will need to continue that workbook on this year on SEL to flesh that out. In terms of the academics, though, I do think elementary literacy is well in hand now. And so I do think elementary math and middle school math, I think, too, would be another major area of focus. So the building-thinking classrooms work has been a really terrific start. I think for reading, we did need to look at the instructional materials. I do think for math, that some of the instructional practices is where we're really doubling down.
Okay.
Erica, do you have anything to add?
No, that's a good summary. I have been, as I mentioned in a previous meeting, incredibly impressed with the academic MTSS work that's been done so far. And I think that the SEL, you know, it's about putting the, putting the pieces in place to make a similar SEL structure that's going to have kids feeling safe and supported, just going to then feed back into the MTSS and make everybody feel more, you know, be more successful.
Hi. Do you ever sleep? Are you doing okay?
Thank you.
It's phenomenal, all of this. This makes my head spin, looking at everything that's been happening this year. So really, I'd like to, you know me, I like to put the MTSS metaphor onto everything. And sort of looking at the communication plan, I think we spell out very, you know, the sort of like the tier-one communication that goes out to everyone. And I just, you know, want you to know that what we're hearing is really good feedback about sort of the specific communities you're reaching out to, and also when people need individual communication from central administration, I think we're hearing very good things. So looking at the, I think that we had a good presentation of the sort of tier-one communication that is going out, but I think all the way up, I think communication has been excellent.
Thank you.
Added, much improved.
I really appreciate it. Thank you, Tim.
And one, just one thing, it seemed with everything that's being done, this almost seems nitpicky, but looking at the training that the athletics and the coaches give, is there a way to incorporate special education into that in reading IEPs and looking at, it seems like a way to make sports more inclusive to Hingham, that sort of seems like one hole that we're running, running into.
Yeah, I do think that the training that they have sort of encompasses the legal aspects of, the civil rights aspects of dealing with students, you know, helping students on IEPs and 504 plans to participate in sports, but I think having them look specifically at student IEPs is, would be a great next step.
Because there are accommodations that are helpful towards
Absolutely.
To getting kids to be successful participants in the athletic program. And I assume it goes across the board to the arts program and
Yeah.
A lot of the extracurriculars.
Does everybody get access to IEPs? Like, I'm just thinking about coaches not being necessarily teachers all the time.
So that's something we'll have to take a look at. Yeah.
Okay.
That's a good, very good suggestion.
Okay.
They should, because they're required to follow, any school function is required to follow IEPs.
All right.
Yeah, I would assume it's related to.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, sorry. Anything else? Okay. She's a host now, so she can.
Oh, all right, good. Okay, good. I still can't see you, though, but, oh, there you are. Yay!
I bet you're in green.
Glad to see you in green. Okay.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to ask a question. Do we need to?
It says act as appropriate.
Act as appropriate, but it's just an update.
Yeah, okay.
I won't let you down, Matt. I'll keep asking the question. All right, so 7.3, to discuss the appointment of a permanent superintendent and act as appropriate. So I am so grateful that you stepped in, Katie, as quick as you did and clearly, up to speed really fast. You've been doing the work for years and in the district for years, but I appreciate how quickly you had to just basically take over and supportive Erica as well. But now is the time that I wanted to ask the committee how we wanted to move forward. I had had a conversation with Katie. She is willing to stay permanently, thank you. So figured I would take the time to discuss it with the members of the committee and get your thoughts on how to move forward. All right, Michelle, thank you. Because they're being quiet right now.
We all might have some thoughts.
I know, and I call it a talking, I've not been feeling well since the gathering of family over the holidays. So I call it a talking first.
I appreciate you not infecting all of us, Michelle, sorry.
You are, it was a lead, I believe. I've actually been thinking about this a lot because I know that as a committee, in figuring this committee, we have really been committed to fully having like open, transparent searches for all of our leadership positions. This is one case, though, where I feel like we have done the work ourselves over the last few years in looking for the superintendents. You know, we've gotten feedback from the community, from the faculty, from the staff, from, you know, former school committee members, you know, various town officials about what we're looking for in a superintendent. And I really think that when you found the one that you're looking for, you should just, you know, you should just, you should make it happen. I think Katie just envelops all of the things that we, 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 we are. She is intelligent, both intellectually and emotionally. She is confident, she is compassionate, she is such a great communicator. I mean, if we've all seen just in the past couple of months, how she has really stepped up and filled in the shoes of a superintendent, which are very big shoes to fill. And I think just working with Katie over the last five years, I mean, I think I really started to get to know her during COVID, when she was, jumped in and volunteered so much of her time to help with communications and help with the opening of schools. I just think she is a great relationship builder, and I don't know, I just think that I think we, we have found a great superintendent, and if Katie is willing to stay on and do it, I would love to see us appoint her.
So I went through, because everyone knows I keep everything, and I went back, when I saw this on the agenda, I went back and I reviewed this successful candidate profile from 2021. I reviewed all the documents when we partnered with NeSTACT for the superintendent search, and they had done all of the surveys, they did a staff survey, they did a student survey, and I just reviewed all those documents today. Kind of was just checking, just checking, checking. And Katie, you, you checked the box from all the way down. So to echo what Michelle said, I think, you know, when you found something great, I think it's, love to see you continue on.
Tim?
This is my fourth year on school committee, and you are the fourth superintendent I've worked with in four years on school committee. It's been a tumultuous time for Hingham, so not tumultuous, that's an overstatement, but we've lacked the stability in the leadership over the last four years since I've been on the committee. And I think in addition to looking at what makes you, you know, could potentially make you a very successful superintendent, and sort of checking all the boxes, like Jen said, what has been going on over the past time and why haven't people found that stability? And I think what you have that other people don't have, I don't know if I'm speaking directly to you, but it feels, is these personal, really deep, really longstanding ties to the community. I think no superintendent will go unscathed through their time, and people will make unpopular decisions, and people will, you can't make everyone happy, as you already know, I'm sure. And I've seen over the past, even just over the past few months, when these tough decisions have come up and you've made decisions that haven't made everyone happy, the relationship is always You protect the relationship with the parents, you protect the relationship with the students. And I think we could open up the search to everybody in the entire world, and there is not a single other person on the planet that has that capability for us. And I think, you know, we can look through and say, well, someone has this, you know, thing, or this checks this box, or whatever, but I think in doing several of these searches, I think, you know, maybe we've learned our lesson about really what needs to be valued as someone with this deep commitment and these deep ties and this, just this deep relationship to Hingham, the community. And you're not, you know, we're not hiring you to be a superintendent, we're hiring you to be Hingham's superintendent, and someone who will be here for, you know, the long haul with the entire community, so.
Thank you, Tim.
Can I just add one point? I forgot to, I had two things, and I only mentioned one.
I'm sorry.
If I add a second one.
No, of course not.
I just wanted to, Tim said something that reminded me, but Katie, you did go, you kind of went through the vetting process when you went, when you applied for our Assistant Superintendent. And I, I was fortunate to just sit on the screening committee for that. So just kind of want to remind the public of that point, that she, you know, she went through that interview process back then, very similar questions were asked that we asked in previous superintendent searches. I think just a point to add.
I'll just say, I did a similar thing to what Jen did and went back and looked at the candidate profiles, both from 2018, I think, and then 2021 today. It's, it's kind of echoing what you're both saying, too. It was like, you do check all the boxes, but I think what we've learned over the past my seven years on the committee is it's not just about checking the boxes, it has to be the right fit, too, for the community. And, I mean, you very clearly are making really good decisions, you do check all the boxes, and you're, I think you're the right, you're the right fit. So, so I would love to just appoint her.
Matt?
So I've never gone through a search, and that's the reason I ran for school committee. So I was thinking about this, and I will just say, I'm 1,000% supportive of appointing Katie as superintendent. I think, just to play devil's advocate, the two reasons, just to say it out loud, the two reasons I could come up with why we shouldn't, one is a little bit what Michelle said, you know, running a, running a search allows, you know, new public, the public to have the ability to, you know, come in and comment and, you know, in a new way, after seeing her in this role and her previous role. So that's one. And the other is the only box that I think that could be checked, that a candidate could have that might, that would likely be different, would be more experience as a superintendent. You know, somebody that has 20 years of superintendent, and they've done a great job, you know, in that role. For me, though, neither of those are, on the open transparency, again, I think there's enough out there, and I've gotten a lot of feedback about these last several months, and even before Katie was named interim, and it's been 100% in support of her, which is unheard, yeah, it doesn't happen, right? And so that, you know, doesn't mean that you'll always have 100% support on every single decision you made, but, you know, there has been already four months in the role, and to have, you know, nobody coming and saying, what, you know, what is she doing? Or, you know, I think that's important. And then on the experience front, I think that is one box to be checked, but all of these other boxes that I think you do check, and you have some experience already, are more important. And at the end of the day, I trust the decisions you're going to make as superintendent, and I think the public does, too, and so for me, it's an overwhelming yes.
Great.
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah.
I've had my big inspirational speech, now I'll do the nuts and bolts speech. I think what's looming on the horizon is not the hiring of a superintendent, but the hiring of Director of Student Services. And that over, while we've tried, you know, so I've gone twice to the merry-go-round to get a Director of Student Services and have, are very incredibly fortunate to have Barbara Cattaldo for two years as an interim, we will not have Barbara Cattaldo for a third year as an interim. And I think we need to hire that position this year, and I think having a permanent superintendent from the get-go will make that a much more hireable position and get someone of quality in that role, because that's, I think, a, going to be a difficult position to hire.
Yeah, that's a really good point. They know who's steering the ship.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, all of the things that everybody has said, I echo that. I got to be the chair as you were stepping in, and she, you know, she's just, you've got the emotional intelligence, you're constantly thinking about all of the different parties and how it's going to impact everybody, and very thoughtful in how you progress and lay out the message. And I, I'm just grateful that you are willing to step up, so thank you.
Thank you. I felt very supported by the school committee and very grateful for your confidence, and I'll continue to earn it, so.
All right. With that, I'll, okay, take motion for, yeah, how we move forward.
Do we vote on this?
So, we think, so I think it has to be done, it has to be resounding yes. It has to be done pending contract negotiations.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
All right, I will make a motion if everyone's ready. I will make a motion to approve Catherine Roberts as our next superintendent pending contract negotiations.
All those in favor? Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you. Thank you all for your support. Okay, we can just leave now, right? Go enjoy. I do want to acknowledge my team here. Act as appropriate. So Katie, have an update for that.
Thank you. So when I had presented the timeline initially, I had suggested that we begin the search after the holiday break. And upon discussion with colleagues, I do think that posting the position prior to the holiday break makes sense because administrators would have time to work on their applications over the holiday. So we're hoping to just move our timeline up a bit, and to that end, we'll be working to form the search committee during the month of December. We have the materials already prepared to post, post those just before the holiday break. After the holiday break, we'll assemble the committee and, again, just hope to move the timeline up a bit so we can secure someone, and that will allow for plenty of overlap with Dr. Cattaldo as well. Any questions?
All right, thank you.
All right, 7.5, to discuss athletic fields and act as appropriate.
Okay, Matt's here, I saw Jim on, wasn't sure if he was taking this one.
Great. Hi, Matthew Meehan, Director of Facilities, Hingham Public Schools. My job tonight is to discuss the information that we've received from our consultants about the field. Much like the high school roof project, my job is to visualize the data. So let's dive right into it. Tonight, I'm going to talk about the existing conditions, the data impacts, the benefits of a possible new field, and then any questions or comments that the public might have. Special thanks to Hingham Police. At the last minute, I called them, hey, can you help me out with some shots? Right up, Dan Goldstein and Officer McGillicuddy really stepped up. Hingham Rec and Hingham Athletics really helped out with this assessment as well. Let's talk about our existing field. It was completed in the fall of 2013, so it's about 11 years old. It's sprint turf, it's a It's a monofilament synthetic fiber. It has a sand. It's probably an Ottawa sand and a rubber infill. And it's a multi-sport field. You can see that with all these different kind of lines all over the field that are permanent. I couldn't imagine being an athlete on that field. It would be a very difficult time. But there are several sports that play this, over 10 at the high school level and much more at the town level. Let's look at our existing field. This is actually as-built from our plans. And really what we're looking at is turf fibers, fake grass, plastic usually, infill, which is sand and rubber, usually recycled rubber tires, although nowadays it's very different and much more environmentally friendly. A fine fill layer, sand. Base stone, gravel, basically. A large portion of it is gravel and then earth and material, which is just regular old earth. Our field was a little bit better. We had drainage throughout. We had drainage all the way down through and a large pipe that drained all the water off the field as well. So they did a good job about 11 years ago trying to make sure this field stayed as it should. The data. Let's look at the data that we have from those field reports. The Gmax, what in the world is a Gmax? It actually derives from crash test dummies. This little device right here is 20 pounds. 20 pounds is about the weight of a human head. So they base this on actual data that they collected way back when. 20 pounds goes down and you get sensor readings coming back up. And they do this throughout the field. There's actually a very stern process for doing this and they follow it very thoroughly. This was our 2023 data. Not too bad for a 10-year-old field. We had a couple spots that are a little high, 180 over here, 175 in the middle. Notice all the high readings are right down the middle of the field where everybody plays all the time. Kind of makes sense. Here's our 24 data. Kind of funny things. They go up and down. The reason why is because we maintain the field quite well. So when we get high readings, we go back and we try to make sure that we maintain that field. So 2024 data, we have some pretty high readings, 242. That skews the average. So keep that in mind. So our average infill right now is about 170. The year before was 153. And we'll talk about what all this means as well. So 2024 data, right down the middle of the field, we have some high numbers. On the outskirts, where everybody's just kind of laying around, not a big deal, although over here, might be some excitement. I don't know. It's 174. Again, this object drops on the field three times and they take the average. This is actually a very specific way to do it. As you notice, between 2023 and 2024, the lines are exactly the same. It's specified by ASTM. You cannot move it. Eight points are exactly the same. You can add two. Two of them are usually added by the owner or the tester. Probably in our case, it was the tester. They looked at points like this. Wow, it's really worn down. Better test it. Or maybe a point like this, that's really worn down. We might want to test it. So they're looking for spots where, hmm, might be a problem. Let's look at what Gmax means to the organizations. The biggest one is Synthetic Turf Council. So whoever puts these fields in, that's an organization, kind of like AAA, that kind of takes all this information in and provides kind of the buyers and the people who put these fields in with standard numbers. They say fields should not have a maximum value above 165. NFL, I don't, I did research on this. The NFL says the same thing, between 100 and 165. FIFA doesn't say anything. FIFA's soccer. They're like, it should be safe. I'm like, okay. But if you dive in a little bit deeper, this language that FIFA uses is the exact same language as the NFL, Synthetic Turf Council, and MIAA. The field should be safe. So we can say 165 is pretty much the standard, especially if you're talking about Synthetic Turf Council. That is whoever puts a turf field in is going to follow that standard. And that's what we should be looking for. That's what Gmax is. They drop this weight, boom, they get a reading. They drop it three more times, they do it eight times across the field, they do this at every turf field across every single country, everything, every single state, every country in the world, and they get that standard. This organization is the lead in the world. They're saying 165 is probably what we should be following. We need to be below that number. So let's go back to our numbers. I didn't want to kind of read out this too much, but we're okay in a lot of areas, especially in areas that were in the middle of the field. But we're also not okay. So depending on where we are with this, our field does have some issues. And you can see, these are two years, so this is 2023 and 2024. We have some areas that are yellow and they're okay. They're approaching 165, but they're in the middle of the field. They're okay. Even one down here, but there's a lot of red too. Red just means it's either approaching or above that 165 mark. And there's also green areas over here. Hey, we're good. Over here, we're good. The second issue is the actual turf itself. So that's the grass fibers that kind of extend up from the rubber that they put on the field. They actually weave in this graph fiber and it sticks up. This is what our field looks like over, I would say, 95% of the field. It is completely matted. That's the second issue. So as you walk on that field night, encourage anybody who hasn't done that yet to walk out on the field, you'll see most of the field is very matted. That's typical. And the report says that for its age, it's okay. Because this field's 11 years old, it's beyond its life. So these grass fibers should be laying down because of its age. Looking at the areas, oh, this is what they say, it's showing significant wear and tear and fiber breakdown along the interior of the field. This is what it looks like along the fence line. This is what a field looks like when it doesn't break down. Actually, it looks like a beautiful lawn. And that's what we really want across our whole field. So we really want to kind of compare matted to not matted. The only places I found on our field, and you can actually see here, this is matted. This is along the fence line, along the outside of the perimeter of the field. This is where they actually take up this, they'll cut it out and place it on the field to repair the field. So they're actually taking our own field to repair the field. So we're going to run out eventually. These synthetic fibers are still standing. They're still pretty good. It's only on the real outskirts of the fence line. What's the big deal? The impacts. So this is the research I did. It also is in that packet. Really what we're looking at is a decreased athletic performance. So you're slipping, you're sliding, it's an uneven field. There's increased hardness across the field. So the higher those numbers are, so the more you're approaching that 165 or getting above that, when you fall or get tackled or slide or kick a ball, you have that harder surface that's going to be hitting you. Uneven surfaces, exposed surfaces, heat absorption goes up. Turf fields are hot. I don't, if it's brand new, it's hot. It's like, you know, some. Gets pretty compacted and it also migrates. So now you got kids sliding or running in the middle of the field, all of that infill gets moved out to the outside. That's why they have to keep on maintaining it. You also get water pooling, decreased durability. That's where they're taking the outside sections near the fence, cutting them out, putting them on the infill for patches. Because that inside of the field isn't really not doing well. It's matted down, it's starting to tear apart. So they're, the durability is going way down. And there's also an increased risk of injury as well. Because you're sliding around, it's wet, it's like almost playing on a grass field. There's the educational and athletic impacts as well. We have a ton of sports playing on these fields. All the field sports play on these. And all of the youth athletics play on these fields as well. So as we move forward and we're looking at a field that adds life, we have high-impact testing Gmax ratings, we have to start to consider, what are we going to do about these fields? The impacts are there, absolutely there. What would a new field bring? There's one really huge difference, and that's this. We have shock pads now. Our old field, remember, was just turf, sand, gravel. Now we have turf, infill, sand, and then this, which is next play shock pads. So that greatly reduces that impact level of tackling, falling, sliding, hitting balls, everything else. Also, not to mention, the research I was doing is that this infill level and all of this kind of rubberized stuff is much more environmentally safe. The sand is safer, it stays in place longer, the fibers stay in place longer, it doesn't get matted as quickly. So it's a really, something to think about as we move forward with this field. The substrate is going to stay the substrate. It's just rocks, dirt, earth. They live it a little off. They're going to keep the drainage in place and if not, improve it. But these are the things that we're doing. The big thing I wanted to tell you, this does not exist at our field right now, which is that impact pad. And there's a couple of different things. We don't have this out to bid yet, but every single field right now has a pad to help out with athletics moving forward. And that's huge to start thinking about when we start talking about replacing these Do we have any questions or comments?
Just one quick question, because you just mentioned it, the shock pad. Does that help with the temperature? Because I see the word cooling on there.
The new fields help with cooling overall. They're not as hot as the old fields. The pad does not help because it's actually below the turf level in the infill.
Any other questions?
That's the only question for now. Wait.
You said the drainage, I was surprised to see the drainage was where it was. I didn't realize that our field had that. You think that's in.
Yeah. I actually looked up a lot of fields that were about 11, 12, 13 years old. Some of them don't have the extensive drainage that we have. I don't know if it was the field conditions that they had existing, where they had to put in that. But there is considerable drainage in the as-built. These are in my office. There's the giant construction document. I looked it up. I took a picture of it. That's actually what we're looking at when we look at that. There's considerable drainage in that field.
Great. Matt?
Are we voting on? I guess I have my questions. Is it just like an update and we're going to consider this in the future?
Yeah. So we need to talk about how we deal with this in the future. And I believe we need to talk about whether we replace it now, what the, what we, what we would do with it. And then I think there was a proposal to see if we would open it up so that if there was anybody who wanted to come in and pay for it, there would be like a naming rights opportunity.
So Jen and I have been in discussions with the rec, not just us, but the whole school team. But it, this was on the plan to be replaced in 2023. And it's, it's kind of, and then it was, then adjusted to 2025.
It's actually been before that. It's been on.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we've known since 2021. We've had it on our capital, capital plans.
It was coming.
That it was coming. We had, yeah, great. 2023 was, that's the 10-year mark.
Yep.
And then it got pushed out two years.
Yeah.
In '22.
Right.
Because we were dealing with so many other things.
Yeah.
And we thought maybe there was some time because of COVID that the kids weren't using as much, but actually the kids were using it quite frequently because it's worth to continue.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt your thought there.
Yeah, no, no, it's just, just how, how we came to have this discussion. So we'd been doing that and that task force with representatives from the town, the school department, and then the rec commission had recommended that we were, seriously consider replacing it this year. There are a couple of things. So one is we do have some money to go towards it that was in the field revolving account that we've kind of been holding on to to try to offset the cost of it. So it's my understanding, jump in if I'm wrong, but it's, we had, we could do a warrant article. Or the other possibility that was brought up was using the new town naming bylaw and seeing if we had somebody who would want to sponsor the cost of the field. We, I think what we landed on at our last meeting was maybe do both at the same time, was ideally we would get the, we'd find somebody to donate the money for the field. But at the same time, there was a, you know, they were coming up on when we have to get the warrant articles in. So if we were going to put forward a warrant article, we'd do that too. So that's kind of where, that's pretty much it.
Yeah. And with the, if we did have a warrant, let's say there's a warrant article in this spring, that, that doesn't mean that the turf would go in this summer. Typically, my understanding from what we've talked about on that committee is that it's not, that the following summer after town meeting will be the following year. So it's two years from the summer that would be when it would go in, best case scenario.
Right. And that's important, looking at all the Gmax data and everything that's not, you know, it's, it will continue to, you know, deteriorate over time because it's just with the use, so.
Yeah. Because it was interesting to see that they're changing the, how quickly those numbers.
They escalated pretty quick.
Yeah. So where will we be in?
Yeah, in two more years.
Two more years.
Yep.
I mean, in that worst case scenario, is that?
You have to shut it down.
Yeah, we have to shut it down.
Yep.
Yeah. Gmax impact points of 200 or more are considered significant risk for injury is, is the, is the kind of language that's used throughout. So Synthetic Turf Association, NFL, FIFA, MIAA says the same thing. The state of New York and the state of Maryland have actual laws in place where they say if anything goes above 200, you actually have to remedy the field immediately. They're the only two states that I found that have that actually in place.
Yeah. And then talking about cost. So if you look back at our estimates from, when we had estimated the cost for FY '23, it was estimated to be 580. I don't know if that included the shock pad or not, but that was FY '23 estimate. And then the FY '25 estimate was 750, which I think it's, from looking what other towns have paid, it's around 750, 850. And then we have 250, Aisha, that's currently in the revolving account. And in that, that, it's in the turf field, it's kind of earmarked for that. It's not like we can use it in other areas for the schools. So that would go towards the cost.
Yep. Tim?
This is, I mean, you've made a very good case that we need to do this. This is sort of more of a strategy question on how we proceed with this. I'm, would be, part of me would be worried about doing this in the same year that we're doing the roof proposal because it would be really bad if the field failed. It would be catastrophic if the high school failed. So I don't, and I don't want people to say, oh, well, we need to approve one of these, the cheaper version, the cheaper of the two is this. I don't know if, A, that means we want to think strategically about when we do it, or B, maybe think strategically about joining up those. or B, maybe think strategically about joining up those two proposals into one warrant item. That's just a question. It's a strategy question, not a...
I don't know if we could do, do you want me to answer?
Go ahead, yeah.
I don't know if we could do that, only because the, this funding could potentially, we potentially already have money that's earmarked for it. We also want to hopefully access that naming bylaw.
Right.
And try to get...
They can name the high school roof too.
And try again.
That is true.
We'll name it after them.
Matt?
Okay, so one more question. I don't really understand all this, but the, I feel like the rec was just doing something with some of the material, there was, I think it's like PFAS, something like that. Is that a part of any new turf field or not a part of any new turf field? I don't even know if that's...
Yeah, so that, so in the beginning of the slides, I don't know if you can bring it back up, I identified what the actual grass fibers were.
Yeah.
Sin turf, I think it was. So in a new proposal, they use a different type of turf. But the construction is generally the same except for that impact pad. Where in the past, it used to just be a layer of sand, now it's an impact pad and sand. So that, I think that if you look at, the new proposal calls this something different than what we call it in the past, which was sin turf, I believe it was.
I mean, it's still...
Spinturf.
It's still synthetic turf, but...
It's synthetic grass fibers.
I think to answer your question, I think if you go and read, I read them last week and I reread them today, the recent EPA studies that came out. Well, there was one in 2015, it's like part one. And then one that came out in April, part two. If you read through that study, or you can have my notes if you want, and really dig into that, that kind of will give you your answer.
Included in our packet, there's a letter from Rad Sports to Mark Thorell back in September. And in here, it says that proposed turf will not be made with PFAS-based materials.
That's right.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, all right.
So the...
We want the confirmation from them again, by email, concluding that as well.
Okay.
That goes to the layer of infill. We're kind of jagged. It's much more uniform and much safer to play on as well. Environmentally, it is also very contained. Whereas the material that we have now kind of shifts, especially in a matted field. If you have a heavy downpour or anything else, you'll have actually migration of this material off the field.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else on the committee have any questions? Do you mind pulling up the Zoom? I saw a hand go up. I just want to make sure. Michelle doesn't have anything first? No, okay. Okay, so we have questions from the community. We have Sarah Gordon. Sarah, if you could name, give your name and address before asking your question?
Excuse me, sorry. There are other people that were involved in this as well, including the rec. I don't know, is Mark Thorell?
I didn't see Mark.
The key online as well?
No, I didn't see either one of them online. Neither one are on.
Jim Q is.
Jim is here, yes.
Does he have anything?
Jim, do you have anything that you want to add? Sorry to put you on the spot.
So I have, I can text Mark Thorell a question as he, regretfully can't get on the meeting tonight. But I appreciate Matt's very thorough presentation. And, you know, I think he's right on what he's presented to you. I think the only thing that I might add from my position, as anecdotally as I've talked to peers with their fields, when we start getting into six, seven, eighty, actual repairs, as we are, that it's reported that the life of the field starts to really incrementally accelerate and decline. So certainly not as scientific as what Matt has provided us. And again, I appreciate his presentation, but that would be what I would offer to you. And though we do have a really good supply of fields here in our community, if that field were to be shut down, it would come with a pretty significant disruption in terms of, we do have fields, but not fields that have what we're used to in conducting a varsity event, in terms of bleachers, proximity to enclosures, dealing with other situations, you know, emergency plans, getting from one place to another. And then ultimately, what will happen if we start to push varsity teams to these other fields is the JV regimen and ultimately the youth programs would likely feel an impact as a result. So certainly not an ideal situation if we did get to a place where the field did fail. But happy to answer any other. Even though I think Matt's approach here to this is spot on. I'm happy to answer any other specific questions if you have them.
And this is the only turf field that we have. We have like 37, 38 other fields that we have that are grass, and it's the only turf.
Correct.
Okay. All right, Sarah Gordon? Do you have to allow her to unmute? She's not there.
Do anyone have her number to text her? She's not allowing her to unmute.
Give me one minute.
She's saying it's not asking, it's not allowing her to.
It's allowing her to.
Yeah, she's trying to.
Thank you, okay, great.
Didn't she try logging off and come back on again?
Can we make her a host for a second?
What if you temporarily make her a co-host while she comments?
Oh, yeah. Can you make her a host until she's done?
I think she just...
Oh, got off.
I think she's trying to log off. No, there's...
You want me to do that?
Yeah.
I mean, she's a, she should be able to.
And mute herself.
Yeah, oh, I saw something happen. Sarah, if you can try to unmute again?
Sweetie, no, that's the recording stopped just now.
Oh, okay.
The recording stopped, stop sharing.
Yeah, the recording stops, so once you...
Try to record again.
The recording, recording.
It stopped.
Oh, it stopped.
Yeah.
I could try to call. I could try to call her.
So I'm unmuted. That's weird, she's the co-host.
It's weird if she's a co-host, yeah.
Yeah, I wonder if, Sarah, if you want to call in?
That's true.
Do you want to try to hit her microphone directly?
Jim?
Yeah, what if you hit her microphone?
Hit her microphone directly. The one in the lower corner.
It should work.
Yeah, I think it might be on her end, so if she could call in. Or can she text a question?
I have to answer. No, it's okay, it's just about the PFAS, I'll follow up another time.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry, Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay, okay. Any other questions? All right, so I guess we should decide how we want to proceed. Yeah, so the task force started back during, right, during COVID. I think this is when Carrie was chair. So Carrie has stayed on. Jen is on the task force as well as the chair of the finance group, so...
I just joined the last two meetings.
So she's an expert.
She's an expert in all things capital, so...
Yeah, so what we're doing is a warrant article tonight, probably. And then, I don't know how we want to manage with the naming bylaw. I'm not sure exactly how that would work.
Yeah, because it was definitely, correct me if I'm wrong, it was definitely the consensus within that task force group that we want to have as much funds fundraised through the naming bylaw as possible.
Yeah.
Obviously, to not put any more, the least amount of money.
Okay.
Towards the warrant.
Yeah, we didn't want to take away from the high school and the roof issues, so.
If we have to do a warrant, we can also pursue naming, and then we can certainly make a floor motion to reduce the amount based on the naming.
Or pull the warrant article.
Or pull, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I think the main thing is that we want to be able to get the warrant article going in case we need it, so.
Okay, yeah, because that's, because even with this, it puts two, another two years before it would be replaced.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, so we'll, yeah, we'll make a motion to propose a warrant article.
Okay, I will make a motion to propose a warrant article to replace the high school turf field.
That's fine.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Matt?
Sorry.
Yeah, no worries. No, go ahead.
Just my only question is, by saying it's a warrant article, and we've said the revolving fund, we have the revolving fund, there's no scenario where all of a sudden we have to pay, like, what if the, so the warrant gets approved? Or whatever, is that the right terminology? Warrant gets approved, there's no naming rights, like, for whatever, I don't know. You can't fundraise anything, then who pays for it?
So it goes to town meeting.
It goes to town meeting.
In town, okay, so it goes to town meeting, and town meeting then says, there's no scenario that we have to pay more?
No, because the town would have...
The department?
Yes, our budget does not get impacted outside of the revolving.
No, not at all, yeah. We have the, we have the revolving funds that have been earmarked since the field revolving funds, we don't use them anymore. And so we had earmarked those a couple of years ago to specifically be for the replacement of the turf field.
And if town meeting turns it down, then it doesn't get replaced.
Yeah.
The warrant article, will that, we need to get estimates and have a price on them? Okay.
Okay. So the motion stands. All those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Great presentation.
Thank you, Matt.
Always feel like there's a little science moment in every one of Matt's presentations. I really enjoy the Gmax.
The former science director appreciates that.
So my understanding is that the task force will work on the naming piece of it and the fundraising piece.
That was mine.
We'll follow up with the rec.
All right, okay, so moving on to 7.66 to receive an update on the rooftop unit RTU for South Elementary Roof and act as appropriate. Ayesha, is this one you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So basically, in terms of the rooftop units at South, we're very pleased to be able to move forward with... When the prices came back, they came back at about 400 and something thousand. So they were much higher. So we had to pause on this for a bit in terms of even authorizing the contract and everything else. Then we, in capital, had a discussion of how could we go about financing it. One of Jen's proposals was to look at the food service account. So we went through and we pushed back and went back to Desi to try to see if we could get approval to use a food service account. And we were able to get the food service account used for about $375,000.
I'm so excited by this.
I am so happy you brought that up, Jen. Genius.
So that was awesome. And in terms of that itself too, the food service account right now does have enough funds to take us to the end of the year, even with the increases in the rates and the performance bonus and everything else. We may have to come back to you next year, it's in 2025, to ask for maybe an increase in some of the rates, food service rates, not because of this project, but just because some of the margins that we're seeing on some of the à la carte items are continuing to shrink, just because the price of some items have not gone down significantly as we would have liked to see, even with inflation being at about 3% coming down. So we may come back to you on that. But we feel comfortable moving forward with this project as it is, and possibly using the KIA revolving to be able to fund part of the project as well, because KIA is also being used for the cafeteria, the cafeteria is also being used by KIA as well. So what I'd like of you tonight is to just approve the contract and to authorize the superintendent to sign off on it as well.
Any questions?
What's the name of the contract?
So the contract is included, and I also have the, what is going on? It's actually Enterprise Equipment Co., and the contract is also included as well.
Yes. I will make a motion to award the contract to purchase and install a rooftop unit at South to Enterprise Equipment Cooperative Incorporated for $438,350 and authorize the acting superintendent to execute the contract in behalf of the school company.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. All right, thank you. Thank you for your suggestion, thank you for looking into that, Ayesha, that's great.
Awesome.
Thank you to Desi for approving.
All right, 7.7 to discuss preschool and pre-K fees and act as appropriate. Ayesha, is this you as well?
Yes. Typically, what we would do is to include a lot of the fees as part of the budget. But this year, we're moving forward with preschool enrollment and soon after kindergarten enrollment. So we wanted to get ahead of that a little bit, just to make sure that we could, that we can, let parents know of what the prices are and everything else for tuitions. With that being said, with that being said, what I'm asking here is for you to approve for kindergarten, that we keep the rates as they are currently. And for preschool, we're looking at a 3.5% increase in the rates for preschool. This year, the proposal, what we put food to parents is to include, through KIA, it's all full-time for both three and four-year-olds. And through the integrated program, three-year-olds get to come in for half-day, five days a week. And for four-year-olds, they get to come in for four days and a half for preschool. We also compared our rates to rates of other community providers of preschool and pre-K. And we thought that our rates were very competitive given what others are offering. And we also, through KIA, we hope to also offer before and after-school care to families who need a longer day than two thirty. And we also will have sliding scales and opportunities for financial aid for parents or families who need it.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Matt?
Yeah, so I feel like during last year's budget season, we kind of committed to at least having the discussion on kindergarten. Maybe that's right now, but I don't know. I hadn't really appreciated it. I guess the question would be, if we approve this, do we have any ability? And I recognize it's going to be a very difficult budget season and there are trade-offs with reducing kindergarten with likely impacting staff, so I don't take that lightly. But I also, we have discussed, you know, having that as a full discussion. having that as a full discussion again this year. So could we change it later when we go through everything, or by, if we vote yes today, are we like locked in?
I mean, the thing about it is that, I mean, if we're going to give people a decrease in the rates, administratively could be a little bit, to get it all, get people funds back to them, because once January begins, we'll have deposits coming through and everything else. So I'd like to say that we're kind of locked in, but if it is that you want to change your mind, I'm sure a reduction in fees is always easier to process than an increase in fees to families. And, but in terms of the budget that we're looking at, I know that was part of our discussions initially in terms of, with the override. I think outside of an override, it might be a little bit difficult at this time to even consider reducing fees at this time until the next override.
Yeah, I'm, do we have to vote on keeping the fees as is? I guess, do we, do we have to vote, do we have to vote on this component tonight? I mean, if we have this conversation.
But what she was saying, I think, is to market it and to be able to tell the community what it's going to, what it's going to be. They need to know what the price is.
They want to know what the price is.
So like, last year, we were debating it, right, and the year before, did we not?
I mean, you can debate it now if you'd like.
No, I'm asking, in previous years, we never, we, during the budget season, we're debating reducing kindergarten, ultimately didn't. What's the, what's the difference this year?
The difference now is just in terms of timing, and, and we're trying to get that information off. So for example, we had an open house this, last week, two weeks ago, and we said to families, hello, families, you know, we, the school committee gets to approve the rates in a few weeks' time for preschool. The feedback that we got from many parents was, in order for us to make a decision as to where to go and who to send our kids, we need to know what the prices are, because we have, are there other places that we can go to for preschool?
Yeah, I get preschool, I'm, I'm, I'm personally totally fine with the preschool one. But the kindergarten, I'm trying to understand the difference, this, like, in the past, we've done it, and not because we've done it in the past, we have to do it the same way.
Right, and I think it's just more in terms of timing, because we, soon after this is done, I think by January, the fully kindergarten folks will begin having their open houses and everything else, and they want to be able to provide that information to families that, this is a, how much it costs for kindergarten. I think it's the same kind of scenario in a community like ours, where people are competing with, do I send them to South Shopping Center, do I send them to Derby for kindergarten? What do I do? How much does it cost? Is it worth for us to send them here? It's sort of, it's the same kind of conversation that they're having.
When we, sorry, no, I was just going to say that when we did the override and we reduced it that year, had we communicated before our budget discussions in January, February timeframe, had we communicated what the price was going to be and then we reduced it after?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So, what if we commit to not increasing it?
I don't really understand, they're paying, are you paying for kindergarten, like, in January, six months before, is that how?
No, you're paying the deposits already.
But, I mean, I think it's highly unlikely we would eliminate. Right, I mean.
Yeah, but I, what if we said that we won't be, we won't be increasing it? Whether it's the.
You could technically, that covers our, our next conversation, dealing with the budget that if we wanted to, if we wanted to decrease it.
Yeah, you could just put it up there, this is what it costs, and then if we are able to reduce it. Good news. You know, you get a, you know, refund or get less of a, smaller bill, you know?
I think Matt's point, which is a good point, is that when, during budget season,
We made that commitment.
Having the discussion about are we able to reduce kindergarten is a discussion we ought to be having as part of budget season. And I think there's nothing in that that says we are not.
That's, that's basically what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, we made the commitment to have that conversation.
Yes.
If the answer is yes, I'm comfortable with it.
I was just a little hoping that we could just have it done and move forward to other things, but I definitely understand your point of view.
Yeah, and I know, obviously, you have a much deeper appreciation of everything that goes into it. For me, you know, looking at everything together would allow me to have a better understanding of like how, how completely unrealistic is it to consider?
So for parents, I think we could approve this, and then, like Carrie said, moving forward. That way, then the parents would be happy, Ayesha would be happy, we'll all be happy. We're just spreading happiness tonight.
Okay, all right. I will make a motion to accept the recommendation from the school administration to leave the kindergarten fee constant at two thousand nine hundred and fifty.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you.
I will make a motion to increase the preschool and the pre-K for Integrated and Kinsen Action fee by three point five percent, because it's the same.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you. Okay. All right, do I have this on here twice? Seven point seven and seven point eight?
Yeah, we will then.
Yep, we're done.
Seven point nine.
Seven point nine, to discuss update to the proposed budget meeting calendar. Can you, Ayesha, I'm not sure which was taking this one.
For this one, I think, well, I think, just a small change to the calendar. Instead of having us, we're having, increasing the number of dates and, or increasing and reducing, or changing, rather, the date to, the budget dates to the thirteenth and the sixteenth, and
Hold on, what month are you, where are you on that?
The second, page three.
Okay.
Or third.
So February.
So, January, in the past, what we had before was we had the thirteenth and then the twenty-seventh. Instead of the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh, now we are looking at the thirteenth and the sixteenth for budget dates of that week, and then we get a week off on the twentieth. And then the twenty-seventh will be a regular, but school committee meeting, where we'll just provide an update in terms of any changes or anything to the, to the budget. And on the twenty-ninth, as we had discussed before, will be the capital outlay meeting.
So we'd be adding in a Thursday, so last year, after the override was passed, moved away from doing the Thursday meetings, we would be adding in a Thursday meeting, just one Thursday in January.
The thirteenth is our normal school.
Yes.
Thirteen points of a normal school committee with extended budgets.
Yeah, there's just a lot of material to cover, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we used to do it every, every Thursday in January.
I mean, if we're voting on these times, then the eight o'clock is a hard stop time, right? It's written there on the proposal.
But we can always sign a lien too, right?
I don't believe we're voting on this already.
No, I think it's just an update.
Yeah.
I heard yes, it's a hard stop time, that's why.
Yes, sure. For you two?
Yes.
If we start at three o'clock in the afternoon.
There are all these, I just, well, I'm looking up, I think there's a bunch of February highlighted ones of those initial dates that we will.
Yes, well, in terms of my discussions with the town, so far, town board, teachers of advisory and select board, they are in agreement on these dates, but because we don't kind of. Yeah, I've just kept them highlighted, just in case there are any changes on their side.
The good news is, is that the Monday of February vacation is not on here, like it has been in the past.
Yes. Okay, all right, so seven point ten to approve grants and donations, I didn't see anything. Seven point eleven to approve surplus, I didn't see anything.
We added, I had one thing just late in the day.
Okay.
Just a truck that we have, it's our snow and ice truck that's completely dilapidated now. Just to declare this one.
I just love this.
I remember one, I remember one year there was a truck where it was all, literally, the passenger side was all rusted out of the floor, like, there was no floor of the vehicle.
Flintstones, right?
Now I see it. All right, so, yeah.
I will make a motion to declare a surplus, items listed above, and to authorize the executive director of business and support services to dispose of them with the least possible cost to the district.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. All right, great. All right, moving over to item eight, subcommittee and project reports, and more inside, Matt, do you have anything?
The only update I have is the next special education subcommittee meeting is Wednesday, the eleventh, so we'll be reviewing an update on that plan in advance of the school committee meeting.
Great, okay. Tim?
The Human Rights Commission met last Monday, and we are actually meeting again next Monday for our December meeting. We're going to really focus on sort of looking at our public relations plan and sort of getting the word out there, and so it'll be an interesting discussion. And the annual menorah lighting will be on December thirtieth this year. It's not going to be the first night of Hanukkah, because the first night of Hanukkah happens this year to be on December twenty-fifth. So we figured the turnout would be a little low that night, and so with communication with community members, we are doing it on the thirtieth. So that'll be great. And the educational programming committee will, we will be in discussion to have a meeting time soon. Eric and I will connect, maybe in December, maybe early January, we'll see what happens.
Carrie?
My son and I were lucky enough to go see Hades Town the Friday before Thanksgiving. It was an incredible show, and just like kudos to the high school drama club and the faculty. It was just really, it was great, we loved it, and I've been listening to the soundtrack on repeat ever since. The middle school council met on November twenty-fifth. I wasn't able to go because I had an event with my son, but one of the parents reps filled me in. There's a lot of good things happening there. And I will be scheduling salary negotiations meeting to work on our goal that we discussed during the school committee planning earlier in the fall.
So this Saturday, December seventh, at seven thirty a.m., we'll have our facilities capital tour. And then on December tenth and December twelfth, at four thirty, the finance facilities subcommittee will be meeting. And warrants are in the bucket.
And Michelle?
I think the only update I have is just on that coach of graduate, coach of the learner committee is doing really heavy work. I just wanted everyone to know the thoughtful process that is going into that. Student four, we've seen it's really elevated in those sections. It's really been a pleasure to be on it, and we're getting really great feedback from folks, so.
Thanks. And I don't have anything to report. So item nine, anything under forty-eight hours that anybody has? Okay. Our next school committee meeting, as we mentioned, there's a facilities tour on Saturday. Then we've got our Monday, December sixteenth, meeting at six thirty, and then the one after that is January twenty twenty-five. Crazy. All right, so with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you for adjourn.